We have a couple of items on the agenda tonight. Before we get to that, I will ask the commissioners to look at the, our meeting minutes from Tuesday, February 10th meeting. And if there, are there any corrections or additions, changes? If not, I will ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion. Motion to approve this review.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Spanhar, seconded by Commissioner Lutz. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank you. Okay. The first item is to consider a request which was, this has been continued from our February planning meeting, from Jeffrey and David Hahn, 702-36th Drive Southwest, Austin, Minnesota, for a variance from Austin City zoning code sections 11.33 subdivision 5C and 11.60 subdivisions 4F requiring separation between buildings. The issue of street setbacks has been resolved, therefore no variance is needed on that matter.
And I'll just give you an update on that with speaking to Mr. Byram and looking at the history of the mobile home park. It was determined that the requirement of setback from the street of 30 feet in the interior of the mobile home park was not in keeping with the way that it was originally organized and that the question of the boundary, the setback from the boundary between the street and the property should be more narrowly interpreted to mean the boundary of the mobile home park versus the street because there really are no property boundaries within the mobile home park. And the, although the streets were dedicated to the city and easements were transferred to the city at some point, so that was how we were thinking earlier, that that was a different, that that was property boundary between the city street and the property that the mobile home was on. However, after further review, it appears that it should be more narrowly interpreted to mean the outside boundary. So the mobile home, mobile home should be 30 feet from the outside boundary or anything bounding the out, outside of the mobile home park. And then 10 feet from interior roads, which Mr. Hahn does comply with. The only issue then remaining is the 20-foot separation between buildings, which is clear, just our ordinance indicates there has to be a 20-foot separation between buildings. So that's the only issue that remains for review on the variance. And there was one other thing I wanted to clarify. I wanted to just go through the standard for variances from the Minnesota statutes. There is some, I think I had the court rules in the prior material that were codified into Minnesota statute. Variances shall only be permitted when they are in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official, or of the ordinance, and when the variances are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Variances may be granted when the applicant for the variance establishes that there are practical difficulties in complying with the ordinance. Practical difficulties used in granting of a variance means that the property owner, owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by the ordinance. The plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. And the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Economic considerations alone do not constitute practical difficulties. The, the commission may impose conditions in granting a variance. However, the condition must be directly related to it and must bear a rough proportionality to the impact created by the variance, if, if you decide to grant the variance. And then I believe we ended with Mr. Hahn, who was speaking at the time, explaining to the commission his, his view on the variance and why he is requesting it. Mr. Hahn, if you want to speak.
Thank you very much. I see we have some new faces here. Welcome. I'm David Hahn. I live at 702-36th Drive Southwest and stuff here. And I will show you a few diagrams which I had last week here for the gentlemen's that weren't, weren't here before. And here is what the deal is, is here, I have a trailer here, that garage I moved, I had this single garage here and I moved it back, I moved that port cement and moved it back here. And I had this garage I got from the neighbor across the street. I bought it for $2,000 and had it, and had it moved in there. And here is what the deal is here. I went ahead and I started out at first and took this sheet up there to Greg Hoyam and Ron up there and showed them what I wanted to do. And they said, "It's fine. They see no problem with it." Because they told me I had to be 10 feet from the street and I had to be 10 feet from my trailer to the, to my garage and stuff like that. So I have 11 feet here according to this right here, and I measured it and stuff. So I might pass my 10 feet there. But anyway, turned around and here's what I wanted to show you. Here was my existing slab right here. And what I did is I went 10 feet this way with concrete away from the trailer and 12 feet this way out towards the street. So I was within what Ron had told me and the deal was. I went up there and he asked me how soon it would be that I would go ahead and do this work. And I said to him, I said, "It'll be about a month, a month and a half because my sons are out in North Dakota working and they'll be back in about a month." So he told me, "Go ahead and turn around and when you get ready, set up your forms, get ready for your concrete and then call me and I'll come out and take a look at it and we'll get the paperwork started." So I said, "Fine, dandy, okay." So when the time came, then we got, the boys got the forms set up and stuff like that. And then I called on Monday, called the office and left a message there for him to call me. I asked for him, but he was gone. So anyway, I told him I was, it was Monday and I was pouring the concrete on Saturday that he could come out and inspect it before we poured the concrete. Well, I have a shuttle business and also I do the blood runs for two of the biggest people, employers in the city of Austin here. I do it for the Austin Clinic and I also do it for Hormals here. I do blood runs, run to St. Paul, Fairmont, Mankato, you name it. I go wherever I want, wherever they want me to. And then same, same way with the hormonal deal there. And I turned around and I've been down to Missouri and over to Green Bay, Wisconsin and all over for them too. And it was a really busy, busy week and didn't get a chance to get back to them and stuff like that. But anyway, turned around and then I had the new building inspector come out, which I didn't know Ron, I mean Craig was going to retire. He never said nothing to me about it. So turned around and, and this young gentleman came out and told me he was going to make me tear my garage down. And I said, "Well, you, you better talk to Craig Hoyam." I says, "He's the one I'm dealing with." And he says, "Well, Craig retired." That's the first I heard about it, so I didn't know anything about it. So he said he was going to bring out his boss on Monday and stuff, make me tear that garage down. And I said, "Fine, come out." And I asked him what time. He was a half an hour later than he said he was going to be. And I said, "Where's your boss?" And he says, "Well, he's busy today. Can't make it." And then I asked him, I says, "What do I got to do to this garage to go ahead and bring it up to code and stuff?" And he told me I had to put hurricane clips in and then halfway from the top of the rafter to the bottom of the rafter, one by across over there. And I said, "Well, I got, I got clips up there anyway because there's a two-by-six that goes straight across there and then the rafters go up to it." And he said, "Well, that wasn't enough." So I went and did what I was told and then all of a sudden I got called in and, and I was wondering how come I was still working on it. Well, when the young man came out the first time and threatened me about it, I turned around and he told me not to do any more work on the garage. I said, "Fine, I won't." I put my tools down and that. When he come out Monday, he never said nothing about not working on the garage anymore. So I went ahead and, we went ahead and did the work on the garage, got it all set up. And right now I have some pictures and stuff here to show you how this deal is out there at the trailer court. There, here you see, you don't see no 20 feet between that garage. You see no 20 feet between the garage and trailer there. And you see no 20 feet in there between that one, no 20 feet in between this one. And this one here is really close together. There's 100 and 102 lots that are taken out there. And all these pictures show just some of them here that, that have, don't have the 20 feet between there. So I don't know what the deal is, but anyway, I have a neighbor that turns around and he built a garage about five years ago. And when he checked with Craig and got his building permit and everything, he was told he'd be 10 feet away, just like I was. And there's another person out there that turned around and was building a carport and stuff, and they told him to be 10 feet away from the street and 10 feet away from his, his trailer. So I did as I was told to do. So if there's supposed to be 20 feet, I didn't know about it and nobody informed me about it, or otherwise I would have never even began to build this garage. So I was misinformed from day one, as far as I was concerned, on the deal here. So now we got these letters here and in the letters you, I got, I got 60 signatures here that, that I have here that show, that are for me to have the garage, have no problem for me to have the garage here. There's one slip there with 20 on, there's another slip with 20 and another. These are all people that live right out there, but in the trailer court with me and turn around and they, or they go right by my garage there and stuff. And I see no problem with that, you know? So I'm trying to get a variance for it because I was told 10 feet. And now she comes back with the law of 1982, 33 years ago, that it was supposed to be 20 feet, which nobody informed me about it and I wouldn't have wasted $15,000 if that's what it's going to cost me, that's what it cost me to go ahead and build the garage. So I would have never put that kind of money into it if I knew that from the beginning. So as far as I'm concerned, I was misinformed there. So I got these bunch of people here that are willing to get up and give their opinion, which this piece of paper that Holly sent out, that, that you can come there and voice your opinion if you would like to. And I think these people want to come up and voice their opinion. If you've got a few minutes to listen to them, I appreciate it.
So just for clarification, Holly, what is the, I mean, we're talking a couple of different measurements here. So the 10 feet is from the street and then the, between the buildings?
There's no longer an issue with the street setback.
Okay.
It is only the distance between buildings.
And that is?
20 feet. And it is, he is correct. There are a number of non-compliant structures in that location.
You know how.
There, I think the county assessor's office has 34 that they're currently taxing. I did call them to ask them whether they were taxing the individual renters or the landowner. They were taxing the individual renters, but now they will be changing that policy and will be taxing all the permanent structures to the landowner, which is the park owner. Upon reviewing our ordinances, it became clear that there was some misinterpretation in allowing these permanent structures to go up and to be applied for by individual renters. They do not own the land that they're building these permanent structures on. There is a process that the mobile home park owner has to go through, which includes review by the planning commission in order to erect a permanent structure in a mobile home park, or in our mobile home park. And those structures would include things like office buildings and shelters. They, our ordinance does allow small, non-permanent buildings, like a little shed to put a few things in, not a large permanent garage. It does have, it does allow things like carports, things that are removable, that you could put your car in. But yeah, not, the permanent garages were not contemplated. If you look at the spacing between buildings, as Mr. Hahn noted, some are very close. And if you're thinking about a mobile home park and the purpose of that park, you're thinking at some point, some of these buildings are just going to deteriorate and age and be moved out and then something new would be put in. With these permanent structures on either side of these buildings, or these mobile homes, it's just a practical impossibility to, to move one out onto the, a narrow road, you know, right in front of the, you know, if they're, what are they, 80 feet long, I think?
What's that?
It's typical, typically 80 feet long. So it just, you know, from my perspective and then just looking at our ordinances and what's required for permanent buildings, this struck, this construction shouldn't have been taking place. And our office now has a policy that we will not take permit applications from individual renters any longer. It'll have to come from the landowner, who is going to have to go through the, the planning application process to have any further permanent structures erected out in the mobile home park. You know, Mr. Hahn, I guess if he was able to get a variance, you know, that's something we would also have to talk about.
Polly, when you apply for a permit, don't you get a copy of the Minnesota statutes and what you need to comply in terms of lot setbacks and separation between buildings and things like that?
We don't necessarily give you a copy of the statutes. There is information, there are informational brochures that you can pick up from our office that do have that information. What we normally do is we do a zoning review, which does the setbacks. So I would grab my ordinance book and go through them and show, you know, what the setbacks or what the requirements are for zoning. And then we also do a building review, plan review, to make sure all the, the building code requirements are met.
Right.
And that's, and that's, you know, right around, you know, either before a permit application is made or around the same time as a permit application.
And I would assume that pulling a permit is supposed to enable the process whereby if there was a miscommunication or somebody was in error, whatever, you'd be able to double check and make sure that that was corrected before the building began, correct?
Yeah. Typically, there would be, there might be a, like a site plan or a drawing like Mr. Hahn showed, you know, attached to the permit, that would indicate, you know, what the setbacks, you know, there would be. Usually it says front, rear, side yard, you know, on the permit application. And the person who's making the application would fill in those setbacks.
Right. Thank you.
Holly, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Could you go back to talking about the non-compliant structures? You said that there are, they're on the tax rolls. Are you saying that, that if you have a non-compliant use, you essentially pay extra taxes?
No. They just, you just pay taxes on it as personally, either personal or real property. It depends kind of how, you know, it would be, yeah, can you speak to that, Mr. Byram?
Excuse me?
Our city attorney is going to talk about the tax, how the tax.
What the issue is that Holly identified and that now apparently the taxing authority has identified, is the difficulty of having a permanent structure owned by one party that's built on real estate that's owned by a different party and how that should be properly taxed. And really, that's at the root of the problem of all of these garages, is that the entire regulatory scheme, whether it's in Minnesota statutes or a local ordinance governing mobile home park design and layout, has as its basic assumption that all of the permanent structures are owned by the park. And they're going to be park pavilions and storm shelters and office buildings and things that are related to the operation of the park owned by the operator of the park. And that the lots are going to be occupied by non-permanent structures, these manufactured home structures. What has happened over the last few decades is those lines have been blurred with people who are renting space constructing permanent improvements to their lots, apparently at the whim of the park owner, creating this, essentially this problem. So the way it's supposed to work is if a park owner wants to build a structure, there's a fairly complicated process that needs to be followed to get that done so that we make sure that they're building it in the proper way and that there's still appropriate setbacks for the tenants who have their manufactured homes out there and that they're complying with all of the rules. That was bypassed because the, the, the building of these structures wasn't done by the park owner. Nothing in the ordinance assumes that people renting space are going to put a lot of money into building permanent structures on someone else's land and that.
Well, and our city staff for decades went through the permitting process with the renters incorrectly.
Apparently, apparently that has occurred for some. However, out of the structures that are out there, there's only a couple who did pull a permit.
Right.
And went through that process. Most of them do, did not have a permit to begin with.
Right.
And so whether or not they would have caught or didn't catch, they didn't apply for the permit, so we, we don't know how that would have, would have been handled.
So going forward though, the burden of that falls on the landowner, or it should have in the past as well. I mean to, to apply.
Yeah. I mean technically, we could have, we started this process before I realized that there was a whole specific permanent building process that the landowner had to go through. And technically, really, he should have been applying for the variance rather than Mr. Hahn, if we're, if we're looking at these structures as being part of the park. However, being somewhat of a gray area at that point, Mr. Hahn did bring this forward and so we're, we're hearing his request for a variance. And he's the one who is going to be out of money and in a difficult position, I guess, from his perspective and.
So do you have an actual total? He just, I mean, he actually showed us pictures of neighbors that he's now put on the radar as being non-compliant. So if we were to look at everybody and go and review that mobile home park and say, "Okay, this many people are non-compliant, this many people have compliant structures." And then how many of those non-compliant never pulled permits?
I just got a list from the assessor's office that has 34 structures that they are taxing. When we looked initially, we counted under 20. So I'm not sure exactly what all the assessor is including. But we only found three permits for permanent structures out of the ones that we had identified just by driving through the park and looking at the structures.
So if we were to apply our variance or our ruling or however we decide to go to Mr. Hahn, that pretty much starts the ball rolling, looking at everybody else in that park. But at that point, then we are looking to the landowners, for those people who are non-permitted, to the landowners to make the corrections and to take the cost and bear the cost because of the fact that they were never permitted.
Well, it's kind, well, it would, there would, it would be up to the landowner to correct the problem, in my opinion.
Right.
But it's still going to be out of pocket to the people who put up the structures, potentially. But I don't know who's been moving in and out of these places and who initially put up the structure. In this case, we know Mr. Hahn put up the structure because we found out about it this summer when he was working on it.
And are we considering these 34 structures, permanent structures or movable structures?
I haven't identified all of them yet.
If they're being taxed, the implication is that they're permanent.
You would hold.
Yeah.
And they're all out of compliance, none of them have a variance at this point?
Yeah, none of them.
No.
So will all the others, if this is denied, will all the others have to move their properties or their garages as well?
Yeah. It starts, potentially. It starts a trickle-down type of.
Yeah. We do, we have only a few inspectors, so we do it by complaint basis. So, you know, if Mr. Hahn wants to give us a list of all the places out there, we would do it. The, the point I would make is that, that, that we, the point I would make is that there are non-compliances all over the city of Austin. We're not going to specifically pick on the mobile home park just because it's a, a unique location. So we're not going to everybody's door in Austin and knocking on their door and asking them if we can measure, you know, setbacks between their house and their shed or their neighbor's property and their fence. So there are, yeah, there are many non-compliant issues in the city of Austin. And until it's brought to our attention, we are not, we are not making them become compliant.
Yes. Excuse me. Has there been any correspondence with the landowner?
There has, yes.
And where is his stand on this?
He's basically taken a pretty neutral stance, but we haven't had a decision yet as far as what, you know, if the variance was granted, you know, then he's, he's not got an issue apparent, you know, for the most part, but.
Well, I'm just thinking he should be involved. I mean, seriously involved.
He has been, yeah, he's been notified of all of our meetings. He's been sent all the materials. He's been given copies of all, actually, all of our letters were sent to him, being the landowner, and then copied to Mr. Hahn. So he's well aware of the circumstances.
So Holly, talk to me about the liability on the city then. I mean, if we know tonight, we've been put on notice from pictures that he supplied and, and the walkabout that you've done on the park and stuff, that we know a lot of non-compliant issues prevail out there. And we turn a blind eye basically to that and don't do anything to bring it into correction. And there is a huge fire and a loss of life. What is the liability on the city seeing as we know about that?
Well, I would say, well, I would say really the, the setback is more for spacing than for fire issues. Our building code does allow certain, there are certain building requirements that you can follow that would make it safe to have things within the distance that Mr. Hahn has them. It's just the, the spacing between lots and between mobile homes. So density wise and then just the whole purpose of having a mobile home park and being able to move things in and out. So it's more of a, a density issue than a, than a safety issue.
So in the pictures that I am looking at where the, the roof comes almost and butts right up to the garage, there's probably a two-inch clearance there. We're saying that that's okay?
It's very close. The building inspectors believe that they could, Mr. Hahn could become compliant with the building code.
If?
By, with firewall protection?
With whatever the building code requires for that, that particular structure and the location.
Okay.
And that, and that brings up another issue though, is that if these permanent structures are in this position and a mobile home has moved out and a new one is moved in, that may change the building code requirements, but because it's not a new building or new structure or an alteration to a structure, our inspectors would never inspect it. So there would, you know, we don't know if, if it would continue to be compliant or not. Whereas most, you know, residences in a residential neighborhood, there's, there's not going to be a mover, the house isn't going to be moved in, a new house moved in without some kind of inspection. Because mobile homes have usually come with a tag that are, they're properly inspected prior to, or when they're purchased and then they're, they're moved in without any additional inspection from our building inspectors.
But you were saying there's no property lines. Basically, there's just lot lines. So because the permanent structure is so close to the home and they'd have to do the setback, then they would be exceeding the lot line if they were to move a new trailer in?
There really aren't, there aren't any lot lines. I mean, I'm sure there's some kind of, some kind of way that they identify their lots for the, for the landowner or the park owner for rental purposes. And there are hookups in each lot, so that obviously makes it as a practical consideration. They, they have to put their mobile homes where the hookups are. But otherwise, there's no, there are no property lines. It's just.
It looked as, I did drive by out there today and it looked like the hookups in the next lot were very close to the garage. I don't know if that, did that prohibit another unit from being put in there?
Yeah. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yes. I talked to the owner and stuff like that. And according to Holly and the owner at the trailer court, there cannot be a trailer put next to my garage because the hookups are about seven feet away. And he said, if I can't, he can't put a trailer in there. He's charging me an extra $100 a month, which I already paid for this last month here. So I'm going along with what I was told to do and that's what I've tried to do from this whole start of this thing. And I talked to him today. He was out to the trailer court out there and stuff. And I asked him, I said, "What's your opinion on having my garage where it is?" And he says, "It's fine with him. As far as he's concerned, he has no problem with it. But I'll have to pay the extra 100 bucks for that extra lot right next door to me" and stuff like that. So.
So you're paying, compensating for?
I'm paying $100 for the, the use of just the lot being set and they're empty, you know? I have nothing on it, so. And that's the way it goes and stuff. I didn't know how you want to work this. Did you want these people to come, come up individually and say their deal or how, how should we work this? This is all up to you.
We're certainly open to comments if, you know, I mean, this is an open hearing.
Yeah.
I have a question for you, sir.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
We're going to have to assume that the 10 feet is what you were told and, you know, that's correct on the basis of what you're saying. But when you look at the additional part of the trailer, the porch or whatever you call it, why did you not consider that 10 feet, having to have a requirement of 10 feet between it?
I was told by Ron up there that if I have anything that's within five feet, I have to have a firewall in it. So we took the sheeting off that side of the garage there and we put up a moisture-resistant, fireproof sheetrock, 5 eighths up there, and then we put the siding back on because I was told that I had to have any place that's within less than five feet from a building, I had to have a firewall there. And I did as, as I was told to do that. One other thing you got to kind of realize too, out in the trailer court there, the lots out there are areas we have to live in out there are about half the size of a city lot, you know? City lots are probably 50, I'm saying probably around 50 by 150 where out there, they're lots smaller. And if you put a, if you would have had to have set that trailer at. put a, if you would've had to have set that trailer at thirty feet back from the street like it originally was talked about and then have an eighty-foot trailer, you're gonna be in the neighbor's yard backyard there. You're gonna be almost up to their house. So, I mean, these people that own these trailer courts, as far as I'm concerned, what they do is they just try to jam as many trailers in there as they can so they're making more money. See, they, they don't go according to it. And another thing about this, this new landlord here is very hard to get ahold of. I've tried to get ahold of him, called him twice, twice every week for the last month, and I finally, he showed up today. So, I caught him and talked to him about a few different things and stuff like that and told him, "Well, I sent, I sent you an extra hundred dollars for that lot, you know, that I'm not using, but according to everything, you can't put a trailer there, so I gotta pay the hundred bucks," which I'm doing, and stuff like that. And, uh, that's the way it goes and stuff. And he's a very hard person to get ahold of. And number one, he just took over, I believe, in July and stuff, and before that, it was into a management company out of the cities, and they didn't care what happened out there, to be honest with you. I don't remember how many years that was into that management company. It had to be about five or so many years out, up there. So, they're up in the cities and they, all they want is their, their money, you know? So, they didn't care what happened down here and stuff, or what laws were supposed to be done around here. And so, you know...
Mr. Chairman, it seems like we have to decide if it meets the three clauses of undue hardship here.
Practical difficulties.
We've got a landowner would like to use the property in a reasonable manner is prohibited by the ordinance, ordinance. That's clear. The plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. I believe it also meets that condition. He did try to, after being notified, he did try to do it right, and he had, you know, worked with the building inspector as best he could. And the variance will not alter the essential character of the locality. It's obvious there's, it's repeatedly done out there, so it's not gonna vary from that. It doesn't make this right. Uh, it doesn't really state the case for any of the others. They could probably come to us for a variance of their garages if they wished. Um, so I make a motion that we grant the variance based on those three requirements.
I'd like further discussion, please.
I'll move, uh, second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Minow, a second by Commissioner Bremer. Um, any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, lots more.
Uh, I'm not clear on, it sounds to me like we don't have a concern about fire with the setback. The purpose of the setback is not to prevent fire from spreading, and even if it was, he's gone the extra mile with the firewall.
The only concern would be as if he ever did move that trailer out and someone new came in, and we might not know whether the, the current building code is met with.
But, but that is actually the problem of the landowner, right? If the landowner can't rent it in the future because there's no way to get a home in and out, that's his economic hardship, and it doesn't actually pose a problem for the city or the community? Is there, is there any health and safety other than, than fire that we're worried about with buildings? Am I missing something, Craig?
Uh, dense, just the density requirements, but I think those are somewhat dealt with by the hookup locations.
Um, didn't we, when we were here at the meeting the last time, you were not here, Commissioner Minow, there was a lot of discussion about the fact there was a business being run out of this, um, garage?
Correct.
And that it doesn't meet the, um, zone requirements?
No, the use that he was making of the garage is not allowed. There was a shuttle, some, he has a shuttle business, and some of the vehicles were being stored in that location. Um, and then there was also a tire, like used tire sales that were, there were used tires in the smaller garage and the larger garage. Um, we've asked that he not, uh, run his businesses out of that location. It's not allowed. There's no businesses allowed.
And is it still being run today? Is it still being run today, Mr. Hahn?
No, what I did is go on ahead and I wanted to give the business to my son, which I talked to Holly about it, and then I would just be, and I applied for a-
Okay, but as of today, is it being...
Excuse me?
Have you, have you closed the business and moved it to another area? Are you still working on that business?
Yes, I'm moving it to another area, correct.
But you haven't yet.
No, not yet, because I didn't know what was gonna happen on this deal here, if I have to tear my garage down or anything else.
Well, but the business doesn't have anything to do with whether the structure has to be torn down 'cause the business is in improper use for that area. So, that was my question.
Okay, but I'm, I'm trying to say is I'm working with her on this deal here about the business and stuff. I'm, we're getting ready this weekend. We're gonna move the tires out of the garage, so the business will not be there for the tires. I'm turning the business over to my son, and I've applied for a shuttle license, which the, which they, I come over here to apply for it, and they said they've never did one before, so they're going to hire an attorney to go ahead and get that made up and have it approved by the city council and stuff like that. So, I can be, she told me I could be a driver, but I can't own the business out there, which I'm, I'm going along with what she says. I'm trying to get, do everything that she tells me to do.
I need to interrupt for a minute. I'm not actually the one who regulates that part. That's a different part of the city. We initially brought it up to Mr. Hahn, but I certainly haven't talked to him about what's required. So, I would just like to note that, that we did not have a conversation about what requirements he needs to go through as far as licensing for his shuttle business or anything like that. I'm just dealing with the zoning and building issues.
Right, and that's not something we would consider at this point now, but I do-
If Commissioner Bremer would allow me to add to, amendment to the, um, motion to that no business would be allowed to be run out of the garage or on the, on the property.
Okay.
May I interject? Are we still open for discussion?
We're still discussing.
Um, okay, so I, with all due respect, Commissioner Minow, all due respect, I looked at those variances for the, well, they now call it practical difficulties. That's codified in Minnesota statutes. I am on the total opposite fence of you, and so I would like to explain where my mindset is. The landowner would like to use the property in a reasonable manner. Um, he's already being told he can't use it for his business, so he's using it right now, today, even though there have been letters sent back from September twenty-fourth telling him he has to cease and desist, which he hasn't done. So, the, so I don't see that that's a, a test that has been met. The plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property. He only made the problem when he put it on there. It was not unique to the property to begin with, and it's no more unique now. The variance will not alter the essential character of the locality. Well, yes, it will, because he's running a business out of it. And even if he deceased to do the business now, what's happened is he's put on notice all of the different people out in the park that we're gonna have to in some way, shape, or form address. So, I don't see that he's met that test either. So, I guess I'm looking at it from a totally different perspective than you are, and I'm just, um, thank you for letting me explain that.
May I ask, uh, may I ask a favor here? Could I have one gentleman up here that turned around? He built a garage five years ago, and when he, uh, went and he has a building permit with him and stuff, that he, or turned around and he asked, uh, the people up there, Greg Hoyam and Ron up there, how far he had to have his trailer away from his garage, and they told him ten feet. And he's got the building permit there, and it's already been signed by them people and stuff like that, so...
The problem that I have, Mr. Hahn, is that you are alluding to conversations you had with Craig and Ron, but they're not here. So, really, we can't, we can't take that testimony. It's like hearsay.
No, I under-
You know, just without them to be here and say, "Yes, I said that," or "No, I didn't," we really can't even introduce that.
I understand that, but what I'm trying to say is that I was told ten feet, and this gentleman here has a building permit, and he has it, and it's legal and stuff like that, and he was told ten feet, and that's what he did.
And was that permit pulled before you pulled the slab? Because I'm being told that there was no permit for this permanent slab.
This permit, I have a question about permits and easements and stuff. I built a garage-
Can you come up to the podium, please?
Yeah, you have to come up, please.
You need to be on the record, please.
Yeah.
Yeah, please state your name and address, too, for the record, if you would.
Ah, yes, my name's Harold Stephen Aron, and I live across the street, 705-36 Drive Southwest.
Can I have a picture, Miss Lee?
You got a picture of that?
Yep.
I got pictures here.
Well, this one looks like mine, but it isn't. It's got a new car on it.
No, no, that's, that's all right. No, that's fine.
Well, I get back from Florida, I still got, or Texas, I still got brain dead. But, back on ten-twenty-nine of oh-seven, got a building permit, number zero-seven-oh-one-two-five-eight, to construct a unattached garage, twenty-four by thirty-two, on seven-oh-five-36 Drive Southwest, Austin. Construction started approximately, Johnson poured the concrete sometime in November. Garage was put up, inspected in January of oh-eight. Inspected, putting, everything signed right here. My garage is ten foot one inch away from my house. There was no variance applied, no, nothing. A building permit was granted, inspected.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Is this the building permit for the structure that's in question, or is this for a structure that you...
This is a structure that was built out there in oh-seven.
But this isn't the one that we're talking about now, so how is that relevant?
For an example, is what he's doing here.
The point I'm driving at is where did this twenty-foot easement, twenty-foot come away? Come, when did that law come into effect? Because in oh-seven, it was ten foot.
So, what is yours, sir?
What is the distance between your garage and...
Ten foot, one inch.
Okay.
And I can explain a little bit to that point. Um, my, my predecessor was interpreting the setback as including a permanent garage as the same thing as a carport. And me, having my background, when I read that ordinance, carport is not a garage. I can't make it a garage. And so, to me, it, a carport can be considered part of the mobile home, and no setback is required.
Right.
So, the, the problem, though, is there was a procedure that was bypassed, there were a couple of problems, procedure bypassed, with the landowner needing to apply and go through review through the planning commission for a permit building. We were taking, uh, applications for permits from renters, and the permanent structures, these garages, these fairly large garages, were being interpreted as, um, carports or cabanas, as the ordinance states. Um, I have, I don't believe I have a lot of discretion in, in determining, saying that a carport is the same as a garage. Um, there's totally different standards that apply to building a garage over, was a hundred and twenty square feet prior to our adoption of the new building code. Now, it's two hundred square feet. So, that is what ultimately talking to our building apart, our department, talking to the rest of the, the staff with our city, um, looking at this issue, we couldn't make, we couldn't continue to interpret this that way and continue to allow these buildings to be smashed right up against these mobile homes, um, as if they were a carport or a temporary structure. And that's what, that's what was allowed. Temporary structures were allowed to be considered as part of the mobile home. And the, my predecessor was interpreting this, and maybe his predecessor as well, apparently, as allowing, um, a permanent structure like a garage to be considered like a carport. So, that's where that, that spacing came from on the permitted properties. Um, and perhaps if the other parties would've come in prior to now and asked for a permit, it's possible that they may have been permitted, but I, I don't know if there are any other issues other than that twenty-foot spacing on those other structures. We haven't gone out there, you know, on the ground at each individual's property, measuring or trying to determine compliance at this point. But certainly, you know, we could do that there. We could do it citywide if we have the time and the, the, um, staff to do it, to make sure everyone is in compliance with whatever structures that they have.
I still feel that the landowner is more liable here than the renters. I think this is a big issue, uh, that has been opened up, and I don't understand how you can possibly do for one for not the other. And I think that somehow the landowner is gonna have to get involved here because there's many, many violations out there.
I do agree with that.
Commissioner Kime, could we hear from these folks? Um, that we, we made them come back. They were all here a month ago. Um, it's clear that, uh, over the course of many years, there've been some mistakes and misinterpretations made at the city, and I think the least we can do is, is let these folks kinda get on the permanent record about, um, their experiences and, and what they know about the situation.
I know this is water under the bridge, but I have one more question that I would like for maybe Holly, 'cause I guess she's the planning and zoning administrator. When your building permit says twenty-four by thirty-six, I guess, whatever, twenty-four by thirty-six detached garage, what person, what building inspector would consider that as a carport? Consider that as a carport and put a building permit as a carport when the building permit says twenty-four by thirty-two detached garage? I mean, what person, I mean, I know it's water under the bridge and it's out of your regime, but I, I'd like to have that explained to me and when this twenty, when this seven, when this ten foot, all of a sudden now becomes twenty foot to have a detached garage. Would someone explain the date that this ten foot became effective? Thank you.
I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but it was, um, in the seventies, so it was either seventy-two or seventy-five, I believe.
So, this don't mean anything? Coming and applying for building permit does not mean anything?
No, it's, that's a difficult question. I think maybe Mr. Hoyam can...
Mr. Byram.
Or Mr. Byram, sorry.
No.
Mr. Hoyam, Mr. Hoyam is, is on my mind right now.
So, your question actually identifies precisely the problem that we have. The only way that your garage, that's on your property, and Mr. Hahn's garage, that's on his property, comes anywhere close to the legal requirements for that building is if you pretend it's a carport. If it's not a carport, if it is a permanent structure, we have a problem. There was always two different setbacks. There was always a setback for carports, cabanas, small utility sheds, in other words, things that could be easily dismantled and moved out if we're moving a house, versus a full-scale garage with a fountain, with a, with a slab and, and permanently affixed to the land. We're moving, it's gonna be a huge pain if we have to move a house out. What happened is that for a number of years, building officials who received permitting requests for garages out there interpreted them as carports in order to allow people to do what otherwise could not be done. Now, the real underlying problem here is that the entire ordinance assumes there are no permanent structures out there, and in fact, makes it very difficult to create and build a permanent structure because it's not consistent with a rental situation in a mobile home park. So, you guys have kind of hybridized. You've brought some things that people who own their lots and build permanent homes do, like build permanent garages, into an environment where all you own is the right to have your unit on that location for the month that you pay rent. And you've, and, and by doing so over time, everyone out there, the landowner, the tenants, the prior building staff, has created a problem where there are uses out there that simply do not fit within the ordinance and can't be made to fit within the ordinance unless you pretend that they're a carport. But they're not a carport. You're absolutely right. No one in their right mind would look at that and say, "This is a carport," but that's the only way they could give you those permits, and that's the only way they could allow the things to happen. So, it brought this all to a head, and I understand your frustration. Everyone here, including Ms. Wallace and everyone else, is frustrated with a situation where lots of rules were never followed, and people looked the other way, and they pretended garages were carports in order to allow things to happen that, over time, are going to create problems for the landowner of that mobile home park, for tenants that are gonna try to move their buildings in and out or replace them, or for people who've invested a lot of money in building garages. Everyone's gonna be a loser here, and what we're trying to do is figure out, from a public policy standpoint, how do we move forward? What's the most appropriate way to move forward? Ms. Ellie asked a good question, which is, what's the risk here? You know, if it's not a fire risk, what's the problem? Well, Mr. Hahn identified one of the problems, which is, mobile home parks, if you don't require setbacks and control how much space has to be set aside for each unit, will stack units on top of each other because it's more profitable for them to do that, which really reduces the enjoyment of the people who live there because now they're stacked right next to each other. So, setbacks have a density component. It forces everything to spread out. It gives people space- It gives people space and yards and so you can enjoy what you have more than if the landowner, the mobile home park operator could say, well, I want all my buildings to be four feet apart or five feet apart. No, we're going to force them to be farther apart. If it's end to end, they have to be fifteen feet. If it's side by side, it has to be twenty feet. They have to be so far back from boundaries in order to make sure we're not using every square inch of that park to put another unit on. So that is one piece of it. But there's also the practical reality of moving eighty-foot units in and out at some, and at some point, that's going to happen to some of these that are set too close to these buildings. And I don't know if they're going to have to get a crane in there, but they're not going to be able to pull them out the way you would ordinarily pull them out because they're not going to make the turn. And that's a problem. And it's a problem with existing structures and it's going to be a problem someday when that happens. And the whole question here is, what do we do about the ones we know about? What do we do going forward in the future for, how are we going to enforce this to make sure that there's this balance between the people who are renting space out there having a nice enjoyable place to live, the landowner who's running the park having a profitability, you know, profitability margin, being able to put the units on where they're, where they need to be on? For instance, the park is asking, is there, are there places I could put some more units? And we're giving them advice as to, well, you have to be so, so many feet back from this and you have to be so many feet back from that. In that context, everybody's happy there's setbacks. The setbacks do serve that purpose. And it's the same type of setback criteria that we look at when we're out in the, in the non-mobile home park world. We, we don't allow people to build garages right next to their neighbor's house partially for fire, but they could have a firewall. But it's also partially because we want things spaced. We want to have that feeling of open spaces, enjoyable spaces. We want yards. We want an enjoyable community to live in. I'm not suggesting to you the answer. It's not an easy answer. Everybody here has frustration. It's all legitimate frustration, but we have this problem.
From a procedural standpoint, we're making a decision from Mr. Hun's request tonight.
You're making a recommendation to the city council?
Thank you. We're making a recommendation to the city council. But this body has no way of proposing a solution for the existing non-compliant structures. That's something that has to be done at the city staff and city council level. We can't say we're grandfathering in everybody before this date or anything like that, right?
You know, there's, there's an interesting, it's not a direct answer, but an interesting historical fact that's in your backup materials. In 1999, there was an effort to reduce setback requirements for the mobile home park. And that went through the whole process, the whole political process, the city council, and ultimately was not adopted, leaving us with these setbacks. So whether, whether or not that was the trigger where the staff said, well, you know, we'll just not be real hard-nosed about enforcing things because we thought this was a good idea and we couldn't get it through the political process, I can't answer that. But that's the process. This body, if you feel like there's a problem where these restrictions are, you know, too hard to comply with or something, could recommend that the city council move forward with reviewing the ordinance. But that doesn't necessarily mean that it gets answered in the way you want. You could start that process. Doesn't change that you have this one in front of you.
Right. So we have to make a decision on this, or we have to make a recommendation on this decision tonight. But we can't necessarily enforce against non-compliant or excuse non-compliant. We don't have the power to do that. That has to come through another process.
What I would say to you on that is that you should have in the back of your mind that what you decide tonight may well be a direction you're going to go when the next property owner has to come before you for their variance on the same issue. Now, their situation might be different. Instead of ten feet from the unit and only closer to the carport, they might be too close to the unit itself. Totally, you may analyze that completely differently. Every property can be looked at a little bit differently, but we have a problem that needs kind of a long-term look.
And I would note to the planning commission that we are no longer accepting any applications for permanent structures out at the mobile home park from the renters. It would have to come from the landowner at this point.
But didn't you say that the ordinance doesn't allow for permanent structures in the mobile home park?
It says that the regulatory scheme assumes that there won't be permanent structures constructed by tenants. It all assumes that any permanent structures will be constructed by the landlord or the park operator. And then there's a system for those to come before you to make sure the overall layout is beneficial to both the people who have units out there and the general public.
Thank you.
May I say one more thing here to Lynn? As far, I talked to Holly today and she said this variance tonight is only on the garage. It is not on my business or anything else. And I'm working with them people on as far as the business going. Like I said, I'm removing the tires this weekend and I'm going to turn this over, business over to my son. But according to Holly, tonight, this variance is just for the garage there, not for the business.
I'd like to just comment, and listening to the gentleman about his permit that he received and based on Mr. Hun's comment that he received the same instruction, I think we need to move forward with it. So I'd like to call for a vote.
Mr. Chairman, there is a motion on the floor and I'd like to call for a vote.
We have a motion for approval. We have a second. We've had additional discussion. Is there anything out there? Anything else?
I would say again that part of our process is that people who come to a public hearing with something to say should be heard. So I would prefer that we let people speak if they wish.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak to the subject? Okay. State your name and your address for the record, please.
Testing.
I'm Dave's son. My address is 308 12th Avenue Southwest. My dad had been in the construction trade for 30 years and I can guarantee that anything he's put his hands on is structurally sound. He was ten foot or how many feet from the, how many feet from the trailer are you?
Eleven.
He is eleven feet from the trailer, but he did remove that wall and put a firewall up. So that's a safety, I think it's a two-hour firewall, isn't it? And he did go off the existing slab that was already there. So, I don't know. Anyone else?
Thank you.
I'm also a child of David Hun. I live at 204 36th Street Southwest in the trailer park.
Your name?
Heidi Hun. And we bought my home. It already has an existing two-stall garage. My father, you know, like he said, is the best contractor, builder, whatever. That thing's not going nowhere. But my thing is, is there's 217 lots out there. There's only approximately 114 being used. So that leaves open 100 lots out there. Nobody's going to put nothing next to his trailer because they got all kind of grouped in there. There's a whole half a trailer park to use. And there, I don't think there has been a new trailer in that lot for probably 10 years. I'm not for sure on that. But I just hope for the best. And like I said, it was on his existing slab that he had. He didn't get any closer to the house than the first one that was already there. So I appreciate all your listening ears. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tina Delcliff. I live at 204 36th Street Southwest, Austin, Minnesota. Like she said, we bought our house. It had the trailer. It has the garage. I have no idea if that's in compliance. The lady that built the house was the first lady that built it. She's passed away. They told us before that our garages were property of the landowner. So if we moved, those garages were not ours. But yet we pay for them. So my question is, I mean, when we're looking at the whole situation, you're looking at trailers that have garages attached. You're looking at trailers that have garages that are separated so many feet. But if you can't have permanent structures out there, then, I mean, what's the point? You know, like if it goes off the landowner, then technically we should contact the people that own the land when we bought our, our trailer, which I have no idea who that is. So like I said, he's put in countless amounts of money. He's put in all the safety features they've asked for. And, you know, I find it a little hard and a little disheartening to think that he's going off of what somebody in the business at their office told them to do, but yet we're still questioning why.
Thank you.
My name is Landon Arthurhold.
Can you speak louder, please?
My name is Landon Arthurhold. I live at 3611 4th Avenue Southwest. I did help him build some of his garage, which he has not had like people off the street helping him. He has actually had people who has experience has actually helped him so they do know what they're doing. And I don't see anything that he has done wrong. He has followed the same, same thing that he has with his building permit, which it does say garage onto it. So, I mean, I don't understand what would be so wrong about him having his besides not actually getting the permit. He has followed the codes that he has had, the fireproof wall he has put up. I was one who has helped him. I helped him do some things on it. I'm, I live there and stuff. I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with it. It's not affecting anybody who's living around him or by him because there is an empty lot there and he is paying for it. I mean, that's all I really have to say.
Do you want to talk?
Okay, thank you. And good evening to the planning commission. My name's Larry Keefe. I live at 706 37th Street, about 100 feet from where Dave's backyard. I wrote a letter. I won't read the whole thing because it's on record. I wrote it to you, Ms. Wells.
I don't believe I received it.
Well, I can give you my copy if.
Okay. And if you could just explain the contents or what you wanted to say to the planning commission?
Okay. Basically, in speaking with my friend and neighbor, Dave, over the past summer and fall period, he spoke of his plan to move his garage located 100 feet from a vacant, from a vacant lot to his property. As time passed, we spoke in front of his home. David spoke of his visits to Austin city offices on how to proceed. He stated city officials, including inspectors, came out to visit and check on progress as the project began to take shape. Dave received many different instructions from city employees he was contacting. They contradicted one another and compelled him to change or modify previous instructions. He could send it to all their change orders. Then one day with the project 90% complete, he informed me the city was crying foul and was going to make him remove the garage because he didn't have a permit. Dave admitted he didn't have a permit due to the confusion caused by the retirement of Craig Horn, who first gave him permission to start the work and then said to come and see him for the necessary paperwork. This is the fifth state I've lived in over many years since retirement. I was an Air Force fighter pilot for 20 years. I've been, and I've also been a building inspector for Atlas and Minuteman missiles being put in South Dakota and northern New York. It's been my experience when I requested a home permit, home improvement permit myself, the first thing said is not to begin any work until I've received a permit enclosed in a see-through plastic bag to be firmly fastened to a clearly visible post or structure in the immediate work area. Why wasn't this Dave, why wasn't this questioned at Dave's site by officials who came observing and the onsite work? No one has from your office, probably not your specific offices, no one has come from your specific office driven through Oakland Park these many months as the police routinely do. We have police cars going through at least three times a week looking for things they should be looking for. But no one from the inspector's office has been going through. Has no one from your office driven through Oakland Park these many months as the police routinely do? Is this city so large that no one keeps their eyes open for such violations until this obviously large project is nearly complete? Forgive me, but it's apparent to me from the above that someone within your area of responsibility, that's the city's area of responsibility, is partially culpable for this mess and for the complacency in not placing a stop-work order here much sooner. I go on, but thank you for allowing me to, that's the major points of my, of my talk here. I hope if, I hope if Dave asks to remove the garage, the city will pay for the removal to comply with the variance. And I hope you all vote to approve of the variance Dave has asked. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to clarify a couple of those, or answer a couple of those questions. I have also spoken to Mr. Hoham about this issue. I haven't been bringing up his, his comments to me because I believe he's not here. It's hearsay. It's not something that you would necessarily know. And I would be speaking for him, which I don't think is appropriate. But his, his version of events is completely different from Mr. Hun's. He did permitting for many, many years. Whether the setback was interpreted differently or not, I find it very hard to believe that he would allow someone to start a project without requiring a permit. Also, we did have a new inspector at the time that Mr. Hun's project was called in, a complaint was called in on his project. That inspector has indicated to me that he wished he would have put a stop-work order on the building, but talking to Mr. Hun, he said, assured him that, from what his comments were, assured him that he would stop building and would just wait until everything was, you know, resolved as far as whatever issues there were. There were no prior, there were no inspections during the work that was being done. There still hasn't been a final inspection. The only inspections that were done were ones that I called Mr. Hun and asked him if we could come out and look at his garage because we understood that there were issues. And we were trying to find some way to resolve it prior to taking this action. We did find that we were able to resolve most of the building code issues. But that's, you know, so I'm not trying to throw Mr. Hun under the bus, but I just want to say that our department has been trying to work with him and trying to do the right thing and try to follow our codes and, and just doing the best that, that we can. So it's, I think there's just a, you know, there's two different sides to this, but yeah, I understand where Mr. Hun's coming from. And, you know, we've had many, many meetings with him. We've had lots of correspondence back and forth. You only have a few pages of that. So, but yeah, it's, it's not something that just happened. It's, yeah, it's been ongoing since summer.
I'd like to make a comment and then I'll cede the floor, if that's okay? Just one last comment and then we can carry on, but I feel it's important. I am going to go back to exactly where I was when we left this, when we continued this meeting, which was that, again, all due respect, I, I do not find that we can meet any of the tests for the practical, what is it, Mr. Byram? Practical difficulties? And that alone would preclude us from being able to grant the variance. But the other thing is foundationally, I understand where it puts you. Foundationally, I understand that many of you that are here tonight, if you have non-compliant buildings, you're probably scared thinking, oh, my gosh. And I get that. I'm, I'm, as a planning commissioner, I am not here to make you happy. I'm not here to make you sad. I'm here to enforce the Minnesota statutes and the ordinances that we have in front of us. And when I look at something that has been out of compliance and a permit was never pulled, and regardless of what you may say you heard or whatever, I'm not saying that I don't believe you because I'm sure you totally believe it's your truth. And so I'm not questioning that one bit. However, the permitting process would have brought to light some foundational issues with where you were going to place your structure. And it could have been corrected at the time. And that's why we have permitting in process. That's why we have ordinances. That's why we have setbacks. That's why we have inspections. Because there was no inspection because there was no permit pulled, which Because there was no inspection because there was no permit pulled, which starts the process. So, in my mind, there was no permit pulled, which starts this whole problem. And I think because the permits were not pulled, that was a problem also for some of you other, that I'm not saying you are or aren't, but other people in the mobile home will have possibly difficulties ahead. But again, it's our job as commissioners to look at the ordinance, to look at the setbacks, to look at the, the practical difficulties test, whether we can meet it or not, and the overall, and whether it's a great thing or a bad thing, happy or sad, that's our job. So I can't take into consideration hearsay. I can't take into consideration economic stress on having to move something. I'm not going to take into consideration the fact that you're running a business. I'm going to leave that on the table. But I'm going to go right back to the foundation, which is we have to act on ordinances and statutes that we have before us. Thank you.
While Byram was supposed to come out and inspect it, then that is not my, the deal is, I was understanding he was coming out to inspect it. And if he did or not, or not, I left a message there for him. And that was what we had between us, that he would come out and inspect it. And then when we get the start, paperwork started, and that's when I thought we'd be getting the building permit going. So it's maybe a little slack on his part too, or a little slack on mine not to follow through right away with him on that deal after that first time I told him I was pouring the cement and stuff like that. But it's all, all under the bridge now and it's all been done. Like I said, it's partially his fault. If he didn't go ahead and come out there and inspect it, I was told by him that he would come out there. And if he didn't come out, that, I'm sorry, that's not my fault. Thank you. Appreciate you listening to my problem.
I wouldn't disagree with your comment about not having a permit, and that would have resolved possibly some of the problems. But since we have a permit that was signed with a ten-foot for a garage.
That is not a permit, though, that was signed for this structure.
No, but we have one that was by the person who told him. And we have, you know, we have to put a little bit of faith in the person who's here. And so I'm going to say that we are in agree, we are in conformance with what we decided on that motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Could I, could I hear that motion again, please?
Yeah, can we hear the entire motion?
From you, Jim?
Can you? The motion is to approve a variance based on the three undue hardships that I feel they do, do meet and that no, with a condition that no business be run out of the premises.
You would be recommending approval?
Recommend approval. Pardon, pardon me.
To the council.
Is there a way we can reference Holly's statement that no more permits will be pulled for permanent structures at the park, or is that a whole separate?
It's already.
That's a different issue.
I think that's standard operating procedure that, that, that's the policy and they need to enforce the policy.
We're talking about him now, not anybody in the future or past here.
Well.
Yeah, but we're allowing, if we pass, we're allowing something that we don't want to happen again. I think what we could do is we could, after the vote on the motion that's on the floor, we could make a recommendation to the department to that effect.
Could we include something in the motion saying that we believe that part of the problem here is not of the owners making, that there's some culpability on the end of, because as I think about precedent and I think about somebody else coming forward, it's going to depend a lot on whether or not I think that they did their work during the era when we were pretending carports were garages. Craig, is there a way that we can clarify that?
Mr. Minow can correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection of his initial comments at the time he made the motion, when he walked through the three undue hardship or practical difficulty standards, said the part about a, a unique problem not created by the landowner referenced that, that this was, this was a problem perhaps with, with communication at, at a bare minimum. So with that, I mean, if that's, if that motion passes, that's part of the findings that he's laid out, that there's not pure culpability on, on the tenant here who built the garage. There's culpability on others.
A couple of years from now, when another commission is reviewing a similar case, they will have that information and can take that into consideration. That's all I was asking for, so it sounds good to me.
That is a correct interpretation of my original comments.
Okay, once again, we have a motion from Commissioner Minow to approve. Is there a second?
There is, there is a second.
There's a second? That's right. Second from Commissioner Bremner. Is there any further discussion at all? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve the variance by sign, by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. One negative.
Eight to one.
Thank you. Eight to one. So the recommendation will go to the city council then, that we approve that.
I want to thank you all for your time and the best we can do for you.
Just to clarify, this will still be going to the city council? Is that meeting Monday? Yeah, it'll be Monday, the sixteenth.
So if you, you need to be here.
I thank you very much. Thank you for your time and everything.
Okay. Move on.
Thank you. The second item on the agenda.
You're welcome.
Is to consider request from Sheila and Robert Helmers, one thousand eleven Oakland Place Southeast, Austin, Minnesota, for conditional use permit pursuant to Austin City Code Sections twelve point four one subdivision three C.
How'd you gamble?
Maybe take the conversation out into the hall?
Yeah, could we move the conversation out to the lobby if you guys wouldn't mind?
Sorry.
Again, this is for conditional use permit from Sheila and Robert Helmers to Austin City Code Sections twelve point one, twelve point one four subdivision three C, twelve point one four subdivision four F two, twelve point two six subdivision five and seven to display sheds for sale in a flood fringe area.
The present land use in this is, this area is industrial. It's an I two district. The surrounding land uses are industrial and commercial. The petitioners have made an application to obtain a conditional use permit, basically to display some utility sheds that they have for sale on their property, which is located in a flood fringe district. The flood fringe is the part of the flood plain where there's less current. The floodway would be the area where there's, there's more current. So the flood fringe is kind of the overflow area. The conditional use requirements are, the, our ordinance does allow storage of any material or equipment below regulatory flood protection level that is readily removable from the area within time available after flood warning in accordance with a plan approved by the governing body. In this instance, of course, nothing flammable or of any danger is allowed. The standards for all flood fringe uses are for commercial uses, accessory land uses such as yards, railroad tracks, and parking lots. They may be at elevations lower than the regulatory flood protection elevation. A permit for the facilities is required to, if it's used by employees or the general public. If, in the absence of, is not allowed in the absence of a flood warning system that provides adequate time for evacuation, if the area would be inundated and then it gives some requirements. I've just asked that as part of the conditions, that it not be allowed to be used by employees or the general public so that that's not a, an issue. Some of the factors that the board, that the planning commission should look at are the danger to life and property due to increased flood heights or velocities caused by encroachments. These would be temporary structures that could be moved if necessary. The endanger that materials may be swept onto other lands or downstream or that could block culverts or other hydraulic structures. Some of these are not applicable to this instance, like issues regarding sanitary water systems and water supplies. The susceptibility of the proposed facility, it's, this isn't a structure. But it would be applicable in that the property that's being stored on that site could be damaged. Importance of the services provided by the, the proposed use, requirements for waterfront location, the availability of alternative locations not subject to flooding, the compatibility of the proposed use with existing development, the relationship of the proposed use to the comprehensive plan and flood plain management program for the area, the safety of access to the property in times of flood for emergency vehicles, and then some other requirements of what the expected heights of flood waters would be at that site and other factors relevant to the purposes of the chapter. You may add any additional conditions that you find are appropriate for this particular use. They may include or not, but are not limited to the following. Limitations on the period of use, occupancy and operation, imposition of operational controls, sureties, indeed restrictions, requirements for other, in this instance, part D is not really applicable and E is not applicable. The, the, there is a, there was some supplemental material that was provided to you. It indicated that the engineer, who, the physical engineer for this company, Old Hickory, spoke to me and wrote a letter for you regarding their expected ability to be able to move a certain number of structures where there are flood warnings. They had estimated that they would be able to move up to thirty structures within an eight-hour time period. And that would include their ability to reach the site from the location where they, they are, their transportation facilities are. The eight-hour period was, it's basically just an average. There's no scientific calculation involved in that. It's just our experience from our department with our engineers. What they think for that area, which usually requires a pretty high flood level in order to be inundated with water. But that they would have approximately eight hours, assuming best-case scenario. The, some of the, we also had to have the plan reviewed by the DNR. Some of the comments from the Department of Natural Resources were just concerns about maybe limiting the number of the buildings to less than thirty, maybe half that in the possible instance where it was, you know, maybe in the middle of the night and they're trying to reach their transportation people or if there's typically rain or bad weather or difficulty traveling due to flooding events. Maybe not even in this area, but other areas surrounding us. So we can't necessarily control everything, you know, outside of our area. So there were some concerns about that. I would just say they, there are also some, there was a pre-existing use there. There was a, there is a used car dealership. They have still, they have used cars that they also display in the same lot. That was, again, that was an existing use. It would be nice to have some way for people to get into that lot to be able to park and look at the, the items that are available. My understanding, talking to the engineer, was that there are approximately twelve to fifteen models that are available from Old Hickory. So as far as displaying what's available, that would be the approximate number that, of, of models that are available. I would be, or our office or the staff would be recommending, if the planning commission should choose to approve the conditional use permit, that as I noted earlier, the area not be used by employees or the general public for any use other than to display small storage buildings, that a flood response plan be prepared, which has been prepared. The owners of the structures are on notice that they must remove them if they're in the event of a flood warning, which I would ask to add that that be a flood warning that the media puts out to put them on notice, that, that that area needs to be taken care of, that those buildings need to be moved. And the buildings would be moved to a location just north of the display lot. So it's very close as far as distance to move those structures. I have, limiting the number of display buildings to a maximum of twelve, that's flexible. You can make a decision on that based on the information that you have. The petitioner will probably also make some comments about, you know, why he wishes to have a certain number or what his, his use of the lot is typically. I understand that it's just display in the winter. There's no sales actually during that season. The, we'd also ask that the flood response plan be reviewed and updated annually if the city requests that that be done. And any other conditions related to the use that the planning commission may deem necessary to protect property in the general public.
Can I ask you a question of Mr. Byram? So if we were to, first of all, I guess one for you, recommendation to the council? Or is this just a flat-out up and down vote?
This is, this is your decision.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then the other question was, if, as I understand it, he wants to keep it where it's at, but then his plan B, if should a flood occur or whatever, that he'll move it to higher ground and he's indicated where he wants that to be. Is there some kind of, like if, you know, he were to have a flood and he lost everything, is there any way that we can have him indemnify the city or hold us harmless if he's not able to get all of those structures moved in an efficient manner?
Well, I believe that you could, as a condition for the conditional use permit, say that there has to be some sort of coverage. It's, it's not a normal type of coverage, like, like if you were going to have an event and you wanted liability coverage in case someone was hurt at the event. That's something that everyone understands and could do. The risk that we have here is that these units are not moved before the floodwaters rise. Then one or more units gets swept up in the floodwaters, gets taken down and either causes damage to somebody's property because it strikes their property or it gets lodged in, in some place where water's trying to escape through and backs up additional water.
Or causes harm to a person.
And insurance like that is, I'm, I'm guessing doesn't exist or is really difficult to, to obtain. That's why flood insurance is a, is a federally operated insurance business because the private sector can't, can't do it.
So then the follow-up to that is what is your liability or what is the city's liability then? If they can't reasonably ensure that we couldn't be sued because that's structured?
There would be not any, there would not be liability to the city. What you'd be looking at, and your original question was, if they did that and it caused problems to the city, there was public infrastructure that was damaged because one of these units went, they would be held responsible for that. You know, there wouldn't probably be insurance for them. There might be a claim against them. But the city's not responsible if a tree gets swept up and causes a clog or, you know, debris gets swept up and causes a clog. That, that's just something that happens. So that, that's not something the city would be liable for. But that is really the underlying question here is, do we feel as a community safe in trusting that these units can be moved and will be moved in the event of a flood? And so that's really the criteria, is to consider how far are they being moved? How heavy are they? Can it, is it reasonable to expect that with adequate warning they could be moved? There's no way to make this a zero-risk question because you could have a flash flood with no warning at all and none of us have a chance to do anything with any of our belongings. These are going to be in the water then.
So I guess as I understand it from your answer then is if one of these gets swept away and he loses three of his structures and they take out some cars, he's the one that's going to assume the liability of being sued?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So here, that's why some of the criteria is how deep would the water be? How quick, you know, would there be a lot of current there? Is it likely that these units, as heavy as they are, would be swept away? I'm not here to answer any of those, but that's why those are the things to think about. Plus, where are they? plus where are they taking them to, and could they move them, and we have at least an opinion of, of their people on how quickly they could move it.
Yeah.
I have a question regarding the plot plan we have up here, which shows property just in the yellow, but yet in the, the additional information we were given, it shows the property to go clear up to the Austin Building Supply. Does the property go clear up to the Austin Building Supply building?
Mr. Helmers owns the property all the way up to Austin Building Supply. The only property he would be using for display is the area in yellow. So, yeah, that.
What happens if he sells that property, or if he, you know, builds a building on it? We don't have.
He would have to ask for an amendment to a conditional use permit, I believe, because he has indicated that he would store those, are those structures on that property.
So that proposed area to move those buildings to, in the event of the need to do that, is adequate in size to accommodate whatever buildings are on display then? I mean, it looks like, I mean, that's.
We can limit those too.
It looks considerably smaller, but, you know, I don't know.
It is, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that they could pack, you know, that whole lot to the south, or those lots to the south full of, you know, full of structures and then try to move.
It looks like there's probably more than 15 units already on that property.
There's 17 on the unit right now.
Okay. So, I mean, and you can see they don't take up a lot of the space as it is, so I think they'll fit back there. But that becomes the question, though, they've had 15, 17 units on there without permit, now do we limit it to a certain number for the permit? You suggested 12, DNR 15.
Yeah, I, part of my, my reasoning is that seems like a, a number that could be moved fairly quickly, worst-case scenario, if they didn't have eight hours, if it took them more time than they thought to get to the location, if they had any troubles with their equipment. It just gives them more of a cushion, I think, but the, the other thing that I, I was looking at was just the ability of people to get into the lot, to look at the structures, and then also being aware that there are only a certain limited number of models. And I was also told that, and this may not be Mr. Helmers' experience, he can speak to that, but that many people will order off the lot, they'll order a special, you know, something with more windows, or a different door, or something like that, so that those structures are often not sold right off the lot, but they, they will provide, you know, a, a way for people to see what they look like, walk inside them, see what, you know, see what the structures kind of look like.
Could we have the owner come to the?
Any other questions from us that we have? So you can state your name and address, please.
Yes, Robert Helmers, 1011 Oakland Place Southeast. We own the property right across the street from the lots there. Now, the lots there that we're looking at, where the buildings are setting right now, that lot is 188 foot by 185 foot, and if you drive out there and take a look, and you see the driveway that goes into where people can drive in and take a look at the buildings, there's all kinds of space there. There's no shortage of space whatsoever, and there's, because there's two big driveways in the front of that property there. And another thing, talking about the flood and the water situations, I've owned the properties down there in that area for a long time, so I'm kind of up on what goes on there, and one thing, there is no heavy current that can come through that lot where the buildings are. The reason why, because you have the railroad tracks there on the back of this property along the whole thing, and then you have Oakland Avenue, so if you had any current at all, the only current would be coming through Oakland Avenue, under the bridge there, and there's no heavy current that would run through that lot that could force us, you know, it's never happened, you know? And the last time we had the flood was about five years ago, going this, next September, it'd be five years, and of course, that flood wasn't very high that time, there was no, no water on that lot to speak of at all at that time. And then also, to the north of that property that I own there, I also own the other building there we own, and that butts up against the lumberyard, and the most water that's ever been up on that side, the bus company told me, the most they've ever seen up there is about three inches ever, they said, never gets up on the hill. And there's a lot of space there, because there, again, that lot, from the, from the west to the east, is 188 foot long, and then from the line of the lumberyard to the building I have there, that is probably another, I guess, at least 100 and, probably, let's see, let me think.
It's 100.
It's probably 150 foot, I'd say probably. So there's all kinds of space to move these buildings, because it's all due with the same land that ties right in, so if there was some event. And another thing is, talking about the buildings floating away, they will not float away, and the reason why they won't, because once that water moves into them, you open the doors up on every building, them buildings are not going to float away. If they were in an area where you had a current problem, where rushing currents were running through, that'd be a different story, but there's no rushing current, because the water just, you know, gradually fills in and backs up, and.
That property was underwater in 2004, wasn't it?
Yes, it was, absolutely.
And it was sitting wa, I know what you're saying.
Right.
It wasn't a rushing current, it was just flooded.
No, there's no rushing current whatsoever, none, and the reason why is because you got the railroad tracks along the whole area, so the only area that you could have a rushing current, if there was one, it'd have to be Oakland Place Street.
That's how they need the bridge.
That'd be it. So, so the buildings aren't going to move. If it actually flooded, and you have all the doors open on all the buildings, it's not going to, they're not going to move anywhere, there's just no way they could, you know? And also, as far as the numbers of buildings there, if you notice for the amount of buildings they're setting, they're 17, and you look down the front, and then to the back of the lot, it really doesn't look like that big a deal, that many buildings, you know? In fact, a lot of times, Old Hickory puts in 25 to 30 buildings in the busy season, you know, but right now, the most we've had there is like 17, you know?
How many models did they say that they had? Like, if you were to put one of each model that Old Hickory sells, how many models do they have?
Gosh, I don't know exactly, but I'm sure it'd be in the twenties, 25, 30 maybe, if he had every model, you know?
How many buildings do you think you could pack into the, into your alternate storage area? If, if there were a flood, how many buildings could you, could you pack in there?
To that alternate area up there, you could put 30 up there, easy, very easy, because you could see now, if you look what I got there now with 17, look at the footage, you don't come, you know, it comes over probably 170 foot on the backside, on the east end, and then on this other part, you know, it comes up probably, you know, I can't remember what the exact footage, of course, 188 frontage to Oakland.
So it's roughly, that alternate is 188 by 170, roughly?
Yeah, the alternate is 188 by, let's see, I gotta think here a second again what that was. Yeah, 188, I think. I think it's by 188, I think so, it's real close to that, very close.
So you're saying it's the same amount of space as the, it doesn't look like that's possible?
No, I think it's 100.
It's 100.
100 on the.
100 by 80, 100.
100 by what?
On the 10th Street.
That makes more sense.
On 10th Street Drive?
Yeah.
Uh, no, on 10th Street Drive, the first property's 188, the second property's 188.
I think.
I think we're talking about the alternate. That's the alternate, I'm talking about the alternate one, right.
Yeah, when you, if you take out the bus garage.
Oh, if you took out the bus garage, right.
You can't put things in bus garage.
No, I understand, that would be.
It says 100 foot on the drive.
Yeah, I think it's 100 by 188.
Probably would be, right in that area, maybe that's what it is, up to the building. Okay, there you go.
Is there no storage on that alternate storage spot at the start?
I have nothing outside at this time out there at the minute. I had cars there last summer, a few, but, you know, on the front.
So basically, that lot's always empty?
Well, not always, sometimes I may have a few cars out there.
But nothing more than a few cars?
No, not really, huh?
It used to be buses in there.
Used to be buses out there, be lined up with buses, that's correct, because there's a big cement pad up there, you know? And so one thing good is, like I say, if they had to be moved, it's close, you know, it's not far to go there, because behind the building, there's plenty of room to hook on the buildings, they have a hydraulic truck with a lift on it, and they just back up, load the building, and boom, they can load a building in 10 minutes. You know, it doesn't take long to load a building with the, the equipment that they have, and they have two of them trucks like that, so I mean, like the guy said, two guys come out there and they can move in buildings pronto if they had to. But the thing is, with the flood situation the way it is, if you don't have a heavy current running through there, there ain't no way them buildings are going to just start floating around. It's not going to happen. If you have them doors open, they're going to stay right there, right where they're at, you know?
Thank you very much for your comments.
Sure, okay.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, yeah, okay. Any other, any other questions for Holly or, or Mr. Helmers?
Anybody else that wants to speak?
Anybody else want to speak? Okay, all right, we'll, we'll cut up for a motion.
All right, I would like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion for approval of the conditional use permit. I would like to reference the staff report, and I would like to read these into the record that the area shall not be used by employees or the general public or any other use other to display small storage buildings, that a flood response plan be prepared and approved by the Planning and Zoning Administrator and attached to the CUP. I would like to limit the number of display buildings to a maximum of, I'm trying to find a Solomon-like approach between the DNR and say 20, a maximum of 20, that the flood response plan be reviewed and updated annually by the petitioner if requested by the city of Austin, any other conditions related to this use that the planning commission deems necessary to protect property in the public in general. And I would like to add number six, which is that no storage is allowed on the alternate site, so that it's always left ready to move things there if necessary.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Spainhauer, second from Commissioner Bremner, any other discussion? All those in favor, so you can find it by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes, nine zero. Okay, anything else you have, Holly?
We have no other business.
Okay.